The Commission's Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on February the 6th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioner's courtroom room with the County Administration Building at 200 South Texas Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the Indication Pledge of Allegiance to the U.S. and Texas Flag Commissioner, all of whom will lead us.
Eternal and Almighty, how wonderful it is to experience your love and your blessings. We thank you for those. We also implore you once again to look after those who look after our freedoms, who stand in harm's way, whether they be first responders or whether they be members of our military who are not even in our country but defending liberties for not just us but the entire world. Thank you once again for the ability to be able to live in a county like Brazos County and for your intervention and your guidance in us making decisions on behalf of the citizens. Ask all these things in your Almighty and precious name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item is call for citizens' input, and we've got two to speak on item nine, but nothing in this phase. We will consider and take action on Agenda Items 3 through 19. Number three is proclamation 24-002 through 24-010, recognizing the following citizens for their significant contribution to the African American National Heritage Society, DBA, the Brazos Valley African American Museum, for this community.
Move approval A through I. And I just would like to say that the African American Museum does this annually as their fundraiser, and they find outstanding citizens to honor, and this year is no exception. They have a terrific lineup of people to honor, and I'm pleased to make this motion.
Second. Motion made second. We're going to go ahead and vote on this, but then I think we may have somebody here that's actually on the list, so, and then I'll get...
We'll add them to the list while we do the rest of the...
Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to read the proclamation. I'll come up and read the proclamation.
We'll put you on another list, then. Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Certainly none. Motion carries. Come on up to the front.
Hello? You want to go on up?
Whereas the African American National Historical Society and the African American National Heritage Society, DBA, Brazos Valley African American Museum, are pleased to recognize the outstanding citizens who have made significant contributions to Brazos Valley African American Museum and to this community. And whereas the African American National Heritage Society, DBA, Brazos Valley African American Museum, was dedicated and celebrated its grand opening on July 22nd, 2006, thanks in large part to the efforts, contributions, prayers of these outstanding citizens. And whereas the museum's memberships started with over 50 citizens upon the grand opening of its doors, and whereas the museums continue to welcome new members of all races, creeds, ethnicities, and have appreciation for the wealth and diversity of Brazos Valley now throughout its history. And whereas the museum showcases through art exhibits of the works of talented local artists, offering educational enrichment programs for the general public. Now therefore be proclaimed that Commissioner's Court of Brazos County does hereby recognize and the whole list in appreciation for the significant contributions of the African American National Heritage Society, DBA, Brazos Valley African American Museum in Bryan, Texas, proclaimed this day, the 6th day of February, 2024, in Bryan, Brazos County, Texas. So, if you want to... Y'all got a speech ready?
No, that's... No, sir. Well, we just were on behalf of the museum. We just thank you all for the support.
Sure. Sure. Thank you all.
All right.
Maybe we ought to stand over that direction so that...
You just be still.
Come up, come up, come up.
All right.
Is this good?
Is this good?
Get them medical...
Get them.
Get them.
One more.
Okay.
Count three. One, two, three. Just one more.
Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll see you again in a little bit.
Can you stand behind the church so that they can all...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. All right. Judge, before we move on, I think we, you know, the motion was A through I.
Would you mind reading those names for the record?
Sure.
So, that'll be out there. I know everybody may not have a copy of the agenda, but I think it merits reading the names of those people, if you don't mind taking the time.
Ginger Carabine, Mike Carabine, Elizabeth Cunha, Naveen Cunha, Max Gerald, Ernest Jefferson, Blake Jennings, Joyce Newton, and Effie Perry.
Thank you.
An outstanding group of individuals, for sure.
We voted on that, correct?
We need to sign those down here.
Okay. Yeah, and here's our apologies to the judge. Number four is approval of Resolution 24-006 to participate in Texas Range Local Government Investment Pool designating Christian Villarreal to Jamie Cartwright as the authorized contacts. Approved. Approved. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number five is approval of hours and location for May 4, 2024, Central Appraisal District Board election.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second to discussion.
Oh, just curiosity. I know it's kind of early, but have we had any candidates file for those positions?
I have not heard of anybody that has filed, but...
Okay. So, open positions, file if you want to.
Have we voted? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number six is acceptance of donated and unclaimed property left by inmates leaving the Brazos County Detention Center for the months of November and December 2023.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number seven is approval of the following invoices from StaplesAdvantages.com. The invoices were not paid in full in 2023 due to credits received and will need to be paid with 2024 funds.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second to approve A and B. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number eight is approval of change order number three, CIP 235580, Overlyance Road, Phase 1, for additional labor and materials in the amount of $130,029, increasing the total amount of the contract tracked to $4,753,288.78. Move for approval. Second. Motion made second to discussion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number nine is award of RFP 23-600-1, Bond Engineering Design Services for the Interloop East State Highway 6 North from Bryan to William Fitch, recommended award of liquidity engineering LLC in the amount of $11,201,952. Move approval.
Second.
Your Honor, I think Ms. Dins wanted to speak on that. Can she do it?
Yes. Yeah, I've got two that wanted to speak on that. So, Kathy, being...
Mr. Quimby is first.
Okay. Jody, Jody Quimby.
Jody Quimby, 4686 River Garden Court in Bryan. Just wanted to get some general information about item number nine, the design services for the Interloop East. It's a large amount, and so just wanted to get some more understanding about that. Can you share with us what the range of bids for the engineering services were and how that award was determined? Then if you can share with us about the budget for the entire job, scope of the job, you know? I understand the Interloop is going to be a giant project, and this is, I understand from what it reads here, this is just one section of it. Is that true?
That's right.
So, just a general explanation about the, what the Interloop is and in this particular project would be appreciated.
Okay. So, the $100 million bond issue that was passed in November, that's where this comes from. And it was listed in that bond issue that this was one of the projects, and it had some dollar amounts in there.
Right.
And so, that's where the money's coming from, is from that bond issue. And it is for the, to do some of the environmental, the preliminary stuff. I mean, certainly that is not going to pay for that Interloop because...
No, no, no. I understand.
Probably hundreds of millions, you know?
Yeah, right-of-way acquisition and all that sort of thing comes later. This is just the design portion.
Right, right. I don't know with Charles, you may want to speak to something. You may have some, another question?
Certainly. As I understand it, the request was for the other bids that we received on this, we did not do bids by Texas statute. We're not able to procure professional services based on value or pricing. And so, we did, per 2254, the Government Code Professional Services Act, we evaluated the qualifications of the vendors. I believe for this particular one, I could be wrong, don't quote me on it 100%, but I believe there were three vendors that submitted for this particular project. So, the committee evaluated those and determined them to be the best qualified, and then negotiated fees and scope based on that information.
Which is, as you say, that's the prescribed method by law, correct? Yes. Okay. And then, do you know what the total amount or what the estimated amount for this particular budget is, project is right now? Is that known?
The construction estimate will be determined at the conclusion of that, of this scope of order.
Thank you, Charles. So, and again, this is, this is just one portion of that loop project, right? And for clarity, as I understand, this is not part of the I-14. This is a totally separate deal, for those who may not be aware. If y'all want to share something about the loop and that sort of thing, if you have time, that would be good. We'd appreciate that.
Share something about this?
In other words, this is a portion of a larger project, and there will be more of these costs coming along in the future, correct?
That's not on the agenda for this particular...
Yeah, I was going to say, we may be getting out of a...
Okay, very good.
But this is to get that project, to really hand it off eventually to Techstock. That's, and they will be the ones that do the project. It will not be the county.
I understand. Okay.
Kind of relative to that, I think what we all need to make sure we understand is is projects, particularly such as this, for transportation infrastructure, transportation infrastructure people don't have days on their calendars. They don't have weeks on their calendars. They have maybe months, and then more than likely, it's more years. So, the, I think it's important that we understand that upfront, there is a huge amount of work that has to take place. And to stay on the topic of the agenda, thank you, Mr. Bull.
And I'd like to remind the court, the discussion topics, in this particular instance, in this particular instance, I took it as the court was adopting Mr. Quimby's questions. However, this is a time for statements to be made. Only the items up for the discussion amongst the court and for approval, if further discussion needs to take place at a different time, it can be that.
Anyway, it's a long fuse.
Let me have a motion.
All right. Kat?
Okay. I'll try to only ask the questions pertinent to Agenda 9. I understand that this is part of a $100 million bond. I don't remember that being on the ballot. What, I remember a lot of propositions. Which bond issue is this road project and the beginning of this? What part of the ballot was that? Which item was that?
I don't know if on the ballot it was actually, because that ballot would have been just this one, that $100 million bond would have probably been a whole page if you'd have listed all that out. But that was part of the proposal, was part of the advertising. It was, everything was, there was a list of projects that this was going to be attributed to.
Okay, so what was the type, what would be the key phrases that were used on the ballot that I voted on in November that authorizes this project to start and the dispersal of the $100 million?
Yeah, we're getting off of topic.
Oh, this is a construction project? We're starting it with this architecture or this construction fee to lay it out?
If you want, if your question is, was this money attributed to that bond it is? That's how it would get paid for, is that bond. That's what, and that's what we would be pertinent to number nine, is how...
I'm just asking which bond issue that was that authorized...
The $100 million bond issue.
Yeah, but, okay, you don't know that, then. So, how long will it take to get the results of this study? I know you said it could be weeks and months, but what are we expecting, six months or a year or longer to do that study?
This is approximately two years for the completion of this.
Okay, so you have... And that'll give us what the price of the whole project will be and how it lays out on the map?
That is, yes.
Okay.
Okay. And that was the only two that asked to be speak on that. We haven't voted yet.
Yeah, discussion. Yeah. In regard to this, I think this is the fourth of the engineering professional services awards that we've made, and I think it's an appropriate time for us in the future to have an update from ITS on where we stand on the on-system part of the road bond issue. And in talking with ITS, they're fully prepared and ready to do that, but I think it might be appropriate for us to get an update on where we are and where things are going, just so we can have that presentation.
So, this is the final contract related to the bonds that were sold to date, the $19 million. There are potentially additional projects that will be, as additional bonds are let, as authorized by the bond election that happened in November. We just started kickoff. We've had a couple of meetings each for the other contracts that the court previously approved, and they will follow the same track, or this one will follow the same track. So, at whatever point the court wishes, we can get Mr. Polster and crew to come in and provide an update. Again, we've just started the contracts. I don't know how much would be available at this point, but the engineering firms and ITS would be more than happy to provide whatever update is requested.
Okay, thank you, Charles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 10 is permission to advertise CIP 24-611, Demolition and Removal Services for Multiple County Buildings.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 11 is approval of CIP 24-615, Proposal for Brazos County Expo Complex Facility Assessment with BLK Architects, $41,000.
Move approval. Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 12 is consider and take action to close, vacate, and abandon a portion of Washington Street, 100-foot right-of-way with a 20-foot alleyway located between blocks 85 and 101 in the town of Milliken. Roadway and alleyways were never built, and there's no public interest survey or serve by retaining the original right-of-way sites located precinct one. Move approval. Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is Budget Amendments, Budget Amendments FY 20...
Number 14 is Commissioners' Court Minutes.
Okay. Folded over, didn't see it. 14 is Commissioners' Court Minutes for the following dates.
Move approval A through E.
Second. Motion made second to discussion.
Yeah, I want to thank Cheryl and Aubrey for the fine job they do on the minutes every month, and thank you.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is Budget Amendments, Budget Amendments FY 23/24, Budget Amendments 18.01 through 18.06.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is Personnel Change Status.
Move approval A and B.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is Consider and Take Action to Close, Vacate, and Abandon a Portion of Washington Street, 100-foot Right-of-Way with a 20-foot Alleyway Located Between Blocks 85 and 101 in the Town of Milliken. Roadway and alleyways were never built, and there's no public interest survey or serve by retaining the original right-of-way sites located precinct one. Move approval. Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 13 is Tax Refund Application for the Following...
Move approval A through C.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is Budget Amendments, Budget Amendments FY 20...
Number 14 is Commissioners' Court Minutes.
Okay. Folded over, didn't see it. 14 is Commissioners' Court Minutes for the following dates.
Move approval A through E.
Second. Motion made second to discussion.
Yeah, I want to thank Cheryl and Aubrey for the fine job they do on the minutes every month, and thank you.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 15 is Budget Amendments, Budget Amendments FY 23/24, Budget Amendments 18.01 through 18.06.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 16 is Personnel Change Status.
Move approval A and B.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. Number 17 is Payment of Claims, Claims to be Paid by Brazos County, Claim Number 8200668 through Claim Number 8200783, and Claim Number 9200238 through Claim Number 9200295.
Move approval.
Second. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Non-motion carries. We will skip down, and number 20 is Acknowledgement of FY 23/24 Budget to Actuals by Fund as of January 31, 2024, and Acknowledgement of the FY 23/24 Continuity Budget to Actuals by Fund as of January 31, 2024. Number 21 is Acknowledgement of the FY 20/23 Racial Profiling Report from Constable Precinct 2. Number 22 is Acknowledgement of FY 20/23 Racial Profiling Report from County Constable Precinct 3. Number 23 is Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 39 juveniles in detention, 25, 29 males, 10 females, and 31 on electronic monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 24, Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population, Sheriff.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. 736 today, 623 men, 113 women, and we have 42 on electronic monitors.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff. Number 25 is Announcement of Interest Items and Possible Future Agenda Topics.
Judge, I forgot to mention last week, January 27th was the Brazos County First Responders Chili Cookoff, the first one. They'll be doing this each year. You wouldn't guess it was the first one by the number of folks that were there. It's family-friendly, children there, just a great event. I want to congratulate everyone that put that on from the Brazos County First Responders Association. And I was asked to judge the chili, and I'm feeling normal today. First day. But no, really, really great chili and just a fantastic event, even though it was wet and cold and windy. A lot of folks came out, and just as that comes up each year, I would just urge everyone to look at the end of December and put that on your calendar, because these people, the Brazos County First Responders, raise money for all kinds of great things like Operation Safe Shield, taking care of the, when we had the pandemic, they were taking care of feeding all the nurses and physicians, all the hospital personnel that were working ungodly hours, wearing PDE and everything else in terrible conditions. They just look after people in the community, that whole association does, and the organization did a great event that day.
And I wanted to just echo on that. If you go out there, you're going to get a really good steak. The steak that they served was outstanding. It was good to be able to, their live, their silent auction was a great one. So, if you're looking for a way to tell people who need to hear how much we appreciate them doing what they do on our behalf, because it's something that I'm not capable of doing, I'm not cut out for it, but there are people who are, and this is a great way to show appreciation to them. Thanks.
So, you got steaks, and Commissioner Conley got chili. I don't know what to say.
And I didn't even have to judge the steaks. I mean, they were, yeah.
Judge.
Still think I did good on that.
So, I'd like to comment about two things. It was brought up last week about the warming center, and I want to say that, again, I want to, Ms. Boni brought it up last week, that she wanted to acknowledge the fine job that was done by Felicia Benford and by Arthur Davila, who both worked for the county. But I got to personally up close, be up close and personal to see the work that they did to set up that warming center. I had a little, I am concerned, I don't know all of the details, and I will follow up with our Emergency Management Center about what are the nuances, about who does what for whom. But I will say to you that having that warming center, it was well-used. Even as they were setting up, people were dropping off folks who needed, who needed housing, or the unhoused, as they're starting to call them. And so, I need, we need, from a county perspective, and I understand the Emergency Management Center has folks from both the county, both cities, and from Texas A&amp;M that work to take care of our emergency management issues. But I'm not sure what role they played in terms of what was needed. That Emergency Management Center was absolutely needed. People were coming in, the homeless, with literally their belongings in trash bags or, you know, carrying them in tote, multiple tote bags. There was an absolute need. I think Felicia Benford and Arthur Davila, who coordinated that, need to be, get some sort of a special recognition. I don't, again, I don't know how that works, but I want to acknowledge what I saw as Commissioner being there. My part was, I was a runner. I would pick up, I would drive, I would bring food, I would do whatever I could to help out. Judge, Justice of the Peace Darrell Booker was also there. There was a great need for volunteers. You know, there was an outcry, we needed warming centers, we needed warming centers. What we didn't have for those, some of those voices that were telling us what we needed was for their time. You need to show up and do what you need to do. But it, you know, for me, it was kind of, it was kind of unfortunate to see how great the need was and to see what those who are unhomed, unhoused, as they called it, what they have to go through on a night when it's, when those, most of us are in our warm homes with our fireplaces or our heating systems or whatever the case may be. So, I, again, want to acknowledge the fine job that was done. Again, I don't know the nuances of how that location was chosen. I hear that they were asking for out-of-town people to be brought there. Again, I don't know all of the details, but there is a need, and we need to come up with a better system to be able to meet that need, because it is critical. And as y'all know, talking about how cold it was, it was brutally cold out there. That north wind was really biting. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is that when I, when I got elected County Commissioner, I felt it was an honor for me to be elected and for me to be able to serve my precinct. Within that group of county commissioners, in my first year, I had to go to a lot of trainings, and so I got to lead a lot of new commissioners. But within that group, I found out that we lost one of our esteemed, honored female commissioners from McLendon County. Her name is Patricia Chisholm Miller. from McLendon County. Her name is Patricia Chisholm Miller. I was quite stunned at her services this Saturday, so I will hobble along. I absolutely intend to go. Within the state of Texas, we have 254 counties. Of those 254 counties, there are 1,016 county commissioners. Of those 1,016 county commissioners, there are only 34 African-Americans. Of those 34 African-Americans, there are only six women who are African-Americans. So we've lost one. Patricia is African-American. So I am in an esteemed group of only six women African-American county commissioners. So I would like to acknowledge, she was so kind to me. So she was in her second term. I don't know the details of her loss, but she was in her second term, and she just epitomized grace. She reminds me of Marsha Webster here. She is just so wonderful and so kind and so, so professional, and she just had that essence of class. And she was so kind to me as a new commissioner. And so I am saddened to know that one of the honored female commissioners of color, we have lost her. But I do intend to go and pay my respects to her. While I only knew her a short time, I actually only met her at two different events. She had that kind of impression on me. So understand that we are, we are one of a small, a large group, 60, like I said, over 1,000 county commissioners. But of me, I am one of six. So again, just want to acknowledge that, let the Commissioners Court know that I will be going to represent not only Brazos County, but just to pay my respects to a wonderful woman.
Please extend our condolences to her family.
I'm sorry?
Please extend our condolences to her family when you go.
So just my comments after being gone for a couple of weeks.
Commissioner, welcome back.
Thank you.
And I will be glad at our next Board of Health meeting to convey your sentiments as a member for the county on the Board of Health, on the Health District's Board, to Felicia Benford and Arthur Davila.
Please do.
I think their actions were commendable, and thank you for your participation in that. I'd like to also call to everybody's attention, if you have an interest in learning more about House District 12 and House District 14 candidates, that there will be a candidate forum this evening. And it starts at 6 o'clock. I think the doors open at 5:30, but it starts at 6 o'clock. But all of Brazos County is going to be represented by either one or two of these House members. So it's at Legends Event Center. So if you want to learn more about these candidates, this is your opportunity to make a more informed decision when you vote in the primary.
And on that note, February the 12th at 6:00 p.m., the Brazos Center will be the local candidates forum for the House races, the Commissioners races, your local candidates. All will be represented at that forum as well.
Did you say on the 12th? Yeah, 12th.
Yes.
Okay.
And that one, that one will be at the.
What time?
Brazos.
6 o'clock.
Brazos Center.
Brazos County.
6 o'clock Brazos Center.
Okay. We will move back up to number 18 and convening executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.087 for deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We'll need, of course, Cheryl and Commissioners, Katie and Nina. Kim. Attorneys. Don't. Is anybody else you think, okay? And the time is 10:35.